And it's a presentation on an economic impact assessment of the museum gardens.
Taylor, thank you, Mayor, and I'll be happy to, and I don't want to steal Alan's thunder because he did a good job in working this. But you've heard presentations in the past where Jennifer Green has provided that for economic impact for not only industrial developments, retail developments, and those different uses. And the last one, and one thing that's become more prominent, is the use of geofencing. And I heard the last presentation that she did of trails, the impact of the trails in Calhoun County, you found that very interesting. So she now is conducting that, she conducted the same topic, we came back working with Alan. Alan, I'm gonna shut up when she say.
Hey, from the Anniston Museums and Gardens standpoint, we're very, very grateful for the collaboration with Jennifer Green and J S U office and Toby for, you know, taking the temperature and seeing where we are. The last one that we've done was in 2017, and there's been so much work that's been done at the museum and gardens complex. And we're, it was very gratifying to sit down and look at the numbers and see where we are. So I want to express my gratitude for the collaboration and process that we've come up through. It was very, very, you know, we really went through very big, no stone will never turn in this process. So, you know, in general, a lot, you know, it was a long process, and so I'm very excited to be here and to do a talk. So, Jennifer.
Good evening, everyone. Um, do you have a spot available?
I couldn't, Alan.
Oh, okay, okay. So I'm not sure. But it wasn't too long ago, so I was with J S U when we did this research. I'm now with the Public Affairs Research Council of Alabama, so I'm no longer with J S U. But we had just finished this, um, this study when I transitioned. And I wasn't here too long ago talking about the trails. And so Alan and the museum staff, we've been working on this for about a year, really fine tuning how we get everything, how we capture all the information, and I'm really happy with how it came out. So, well, I'll cover with you tonight, and I'm not gonna belabor anything, but do ask questions if you have any. The focus geography we're talking about, the methodology of geofencing, estimating visitor spending, and estimating the impacts, the findings, research limitations, and what resources we used. So, as you all know, Anniston Museum and Gardens is located in Calhoun County. And so this was the economic impact and contribution analysis that the museums and gardens have just on Calhoun County. So we used geofencing. So in past, most ways we gauge how many visitors a place has. Is through the point of sale data or number of tickets sold, that sort of thing. And one cool thing we saw when we used geofencing for the museum was, yes, the museum has records of their tickets sold and children's scene and all of that. But what they didn't have was the number of people that come in through events, be it weddings, foundation galas, that sort of thing. They don't have a headcount of who those people are, where they're from. So geofencing really helped us identify those additional people. So, again, for those of you, I feel like I've told somebody about geofencing every day, so I feel like everybody already knows. But so geofencing is just, it's very popular in retail and real estate. It uses the information, we use Placer AI, it gets the information scrubbed from about 400 different apps. So if you have like progressive insurance on your phone and you allow it to follow you, that's one of, like, that's an example of one of the apps, Strava, Live60, all those kind of apps that can follow you, and if you have your location to where it can, it doesn't know who you are. All it knows is that a unique device ID, so every device has a 16-digit identifying code, whether it be your iWatch or your cell phone. And then it knows where that device is at that moment, and it knows where the device stays at the most nights. So that's how the visitor origination comes from. So through geofencing, the Anniston Museums and Gardens property, we determined that there were approximately 60,082 visits in 2023. So all of that, this first bullet point, the 35,165 originating from zip codes within Calhoun County, 18,014 originating from zip codes within Alabama outside of Calhoun County, and then 6,903 visits originating from zip codes outside of Alabama. And again, when we're geofencing, it's like drawing a virtual fence around something and getting that information from just that place. So say somebody just drives in and drives right back out. Well, we had it set where they have to spend at least 10 minutes there on the museum grounds. And then the device ID, if someone said they came in that morning, they went back out, they came back. However, I don't know, the museum, I'm sure Alan lets people come back. But that's just one visit, so it just, it sees that unique ID. So, you know, if you cross the geo fence multiple times, it's gonna register who was that one visitor that day. So, now, the 7,578 students from Alabama, we got that information from Alan and the museum staff because Placer doesn't really track children. It's very protective about that. So 2,030 within Calhoun County, 5,548 outside Calhoun County. And of those 60,082 visits, 42,300 were unique visitors from approximately 35 different states. So next, we have how many visits and how many visitors. We had to determine visitor spending. And this is the current methodology we are using when we don't have direct intercept survey data, which is very time-consuming and expensive to get. But, so according to the State of Alabama's Tourism Report 2023, the average visitor spends $814 per visit. So we know that not everyone that visits the museum spends $814. So we discount that to a Calhoun County visit, a visitor spending per person, say they traveled from the rest of the state, from somewhere else in the state to the museum, and then the visitor spending per person if they are somewhere from outside of the US. Now, I will go over this in the, in our, our, kind of, what makes this difficult is you don't know what place, if people were here because of the museum or if they were here for some other reason and came to the museum. I mean, were they here to visit family and came to the museum, or are they here for a wedding at the museum, I mean. So we have no idea for each individual visitor how much they're gonna spend. So when we say this spending, this is the maximum ceiling of economic impact the museum could have if it were to follow the spending kind of methodology in the tourism. We don't, we do not want, we would be totally overstating, I think, if we said every visitor to the museum spent $814, of course. So that's why we discounted the Calhoun County and the rest of Alabama spending. So the in-county resident direct spending was about 8.5 million. The out-of-county, rest of Alabama visitor direct spending was 8.2 million. And the out-of-county, rest of US visitor direct spending was 5.6 million. So these next slides, and again, I feel like I've talked to essentially the councils, I mean, times up. Feel like I'm beating a dead horse. But so economic impact looks at what impact something has, a bit spending has on that geography. It's like, how many times does the money go through the local economy? And so these next slides, they're kind of, and we will have this for the city. Alan has it, Jackson has it. But this is kind of the nerdy part of the economic impact analysis. And then you go to the, so what we use is what's called InPlan. It's an economic modeling software, it's an input-output analysis. And so what that is, is a macroeconomic modeling technique that examines the interdependencies of ripple effects across different sectors of an economy. And that's really important because a lot of times in economic development, we as citizens of the state often hear about the direct effects of something. You know, Honda's Toyota, car dealership, this is coming, they'll have, they're hiring five people and they'll have, you know, a million dollars in sale, you know, whatever. Well, that's just the direct effect. That has a ripple effect into the indirect and induced spending effects within the county. So it's, we're just, when we're told the direct effects, we're just being told the tip of the iceberg. We're not seeing the entire iceberg, because a lot of it is just not there. So this goes over InPlan. And the different types of impacts from economic activity, like how many employment, how many jobs does an event support, labor income, the associated compensation, value added, the difference between an industry or establishment's total output, is kind of seen as a measurement of GDP, and then total output, the broadest measure of economic impact by calculating total increase in business sales revenue. And then we have the direct effects, this is what I was just kind of talking about. And if we can go through this, I've got some illustrations that better. So in talking about tourism, so say you have Susie, the tourist, she comes to Anniston. She spends her money at the hotel, that's a direct tourism expense. The hotel, this is how that ripple effect works in the indirect and induced. The hotel then spends its money to hire Sam, the concierge, that's indirect tourism expense. And then Sam, the concierge, then spends his household income to buy groceries at the local grocery store. That's induced tourism expense. So what we're talking about, you know, when we were saying like 8.5 million and spending 8.1 million and spending, those were the direct, you know, excess spending dollars. But what we're about to show you is the total output that that direct spending has. So we call, with in-county, we refer to it as confirmation analysis because it's within the geography, but of 12.2 million, 116 jobs supported. And that's, I mean, your grocery store, your, that's not just the museum, that's not saying the museum has 116 employees. That's the number of jobs supported that the museum contributes to within this county. And then we've got for the out-of-county, rest of Alabama visitor spending, the economic impact is about 7.5 or 6 million, 77 jobs supported. And let me go to the next one, rest of US, that total output was 6.2 million, 77 jobs supported. So we looked at not only visitor spending, but their operations, the economic impact of their operations, that business, the business spending throughout the county. And so that had an impact of 2.8 million. And then capital expenditures, I think they had about 400,000 that were spent on some new roofs or capital expenditures made to the museum. That had an economic impact of about $611,000. And then we calculated the number of labor hours that they had through all of their volunteers. And a lot of times, we don't look at that in economic impact modeling because a lot of times it's just not thought of, volunteers, they don't spend anything. Well, they do, they do spend some, they spend their gas when you get there, they spend their money to, you know, I mean, we don't know exactly every little thing of volunteer spend, but there is an economic impact to them being there and contributing. And so through that analysis, we, it's about $55,000 that you're not having to pay anyone that you're getting help for. So research limitations, current geofencing technology cannot capture international visits. And then the challenges in attributing tourist spending to a certain attraction. We know that there were 60,000 people on the museum property for more than 10 minutes during 2023, or maybe more than that that weren't tracked, I mean, it's not perfect. But without being God or questioning every single person that comes through the museum doors as to why they were there, were they there for the museum or for something else, we don't know. But, so that's just kind of the caveat to all of this. But I think, I think that's it, yeah.
Any, any question? Thank you, Jennifer.
This is a very problematic question, so please excuse my lack of technology, knowledge and technology. Okay, excuse me, I have an Apple Watch, I have an Apple phone, and back to geofencing. Are those two separate numbers or do, so in other words, I could be candid, it's two things?
You could, yeah, and that's why it's not perfect. But if you don't have that function of that GPS function now that you have on your watch, like, I don't, I mean, it's just my watch, I don't have it, it's not a cell, there would have to be a paid, it's the option where, where you pay for the service, it's like an additional line in your cell phone bill?
So if you're not just connected to a page, you're cellular, cellular data?
Right.
It's like a separate?
Where you're paying an additional line, or, I mean, where you can be without your phone and use your watch to make calls and take calls.
So it's not necessarily tracking your fitness tracker or?
No.
Anything, any other things monitoring you to be able to do? Always a good question.
It really was.
Yeah, no, and that's, you know, as, as the technology advances, I mean, that's gonna be something they're gonna have to, you know, factor in.
Any, any other questions? Would you grant any later to Alan or Toby and you? Okay, Jennifer, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, we've got two other presentations, and this time I'll call them Candy Williams, who will lead the presentation on events at the RNC Hospital.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to start out by saying, how many of you guys, leaders here, people visiting, have visited RNC Hospital? How many of you guys have either taken a complaint or had a complaint from a family member that has been negatively related to the hospital? I hear you. So I'm excited to tell you guys that we've done a lot of work in the past year, especially since the transition from Springfield to RNC as the sole provider of community. And we've got data here to show you that you're gonna be able to answer those complaints in a positive way and tell them about all the great things that we're doing at the hospital, and I'm super excited. So just to introduce ourselves, my name is Candy Williams. I'm the chief nursing officer for the organization. I've been in this role for about two years, I've seen a lot of changes in the past two years, but I am very excited to continue this path of change and improvement for our community. I'm from Welborn, I graduated from Welborn, been here all my life. And so this is my hospital, this is my community, and I am, I'm here for the long haul. So I want our hospital to be successful.
I'm Chris McGowan, so I, I'm from Jacksonville. I got my bachelor's in nursing at J S U, I finished my masters through U A D in the spring. But I grew up at Jacksonville, Jacksonville Hospital, went to J S U. I started at RNC actually when I was 15 in the volunteer in the ER. I basically worked full-time hours as a volunteer, I was a tag, I'm in a scrub. Leadership was never my thing, never wanted to go back to school, but I never applied. So nursing opened doors that I didn't anticipate. But I've spent, I'm 30 years old, and I've spent 15 years, you know, at RNC in the department.
My name is Benjamin Bailey, I'm the co-director at, as we know, at the emergency department. I've been working at the emergency department about 11 years. Eventually, originally from Connecticut, I went to medical school at Cornell in New York City and did my residency in the South Bronx at Lincoln Hospital in emergency medicine. Kind of, I have relatives that live in Huntsville, many relatives in Huntsville, my father, my uncle. I started working at Huntsville Hospital, and I moved to Atlanta, kept my Alabama license, and was just trying to find the, I mean, I kind of bounced around different hospitals in Alabama and said, well, you know, which one's the closest to the border and is Anniston. So I ended up working here in the, kind of, was it 2013, something? And just kind of just stuck. I had, it reminded me of where I trained and the kind of population that I wanted to take care of. So I stayed, and then as things happened, there was an unexpected need for director. So I thought that we would step up and try and see what I could do to help continue to take care of the community.
So in January 2024, you guys didn't know, but we knew that we were gonna be transitioning from Springfield Hospital into a one-campus facility. And so we had to start working on the things that we needed to do to be able to prepare for that, right? So that was a big task, that we knew we had to be able to consolidate our emergency departments, our ICU's, our detox program, and our inpatient medical services. So we had some key objectives that I was tasked with, and that were really important to me as a chief nursing officer. I wanted to maintain the same amount of inpatient beds, meaning we still have the same capacity to treat patients that need to be admitted to the hospital. Task achieved, we were able to do that during the transition. We wanted to retain our staff. We had a roughly 72% retention rate post-transition. I'm gonna chop that up as a success because we did have some people that wanted to transition to different roles, and that was a perfect opportunity for them, but we did have over 70% retention. We wanted to improve our throughput, throughput means the movement through the organization from the time you hit the door to the time you discharge, even that discharge to the home from the ER or discharge from an inpatient unit once you've been admitted and you've stayed a few days. We wanted to improve our throughput to accommodate an increase in emergency department patients. We knew we were gonna get more patients, and we knew we didn't have that much more real estate, and we had to be able to accommodate the community because, again, we're the only ER and we've gotta be able to take care of people. And then we wanted to implement processes in the emergency department to accommodate lower community patients. We knew, just based on our research and our experience at the Springfield campus, typically your less sick, lower acuity patients would go to your Springfield campus. It was almost treated as like an urgent care. Yes, there were some higher acuity, more sicker patients that went to the Springfield campus, but we knew we had to have a plan for those lower acuity patients because we knew that we're not gonna be able to come in and tolerate long lengths of stay in our emergency department, nor did we want them to expect that. So we had a couple of challenges. We knew, self-aware, we had some problems within the organization. We had extended lobby times, we had wait times that were excessive, 10 hours sitting in the lobby. I don't wanna sit in a lobby for 10 hours, do you? Absolutely not. Before the transition, it was, it was normal, as is normal throughout the nation for what is called waiting room medicine. So if you don't have the ability to take care of somebody in the back, you take care of them where they are, which is the waiting room. You would see patients with IDs, you would see patients getting medication, all while sitting in a lobby. And that's not ideal for the patient, for the family, or for our staff. We had a lot of admitted patients being held in the ED, meaning we didn't have goods upstairs to send them to, and so there were longer lengths of stay for patients that were waiting to be admitted. We knew we had some challenges with physician and nurse practitioner staffing. There were periods of time in the middle of the night where we only had one physician on staff for the whole community, and that's, that could be quite challenging. If you have one patient coming in that's had a traumatic event, that physician is tied up for the next couple of hours, and that's not good for everybody else. Of large members of mental health patients, this is still a challenge, if you guys aren't aware. We have a huge mental health demographic in our community. We struggle, there's not a lot of resources for that, but we're working on the things that we can do within the organization. And then low patient satisfaction scores, which stem from the issues above. Post-transition, we knew we were gonna struggle, or we were gonna have to figure out how to accommodate an increase in our daily volume, those patients are gonna go somewhere. As usually, they're gonna come to RNC, and we want to be able to take care of them, but we wanna be able to do it in a secondary patient way. All right, so was it just a one, a one quick fix? There were lots of things that we had to tweak and we had to improve to be able to improve the total experience. So we wanted to increase our physician, our nurse practitioner coverage, meaning we wanted more of them and we wanted to give them more hours. We wanted to increase our nursing staff. How many people have heard of the ER short staff? I will tell you that a nurse will tell you they're short staff no matter what, but I promise you, they're always kept to the ratios where they're supposed to be and safe. I would not let them operate any other way, I promise you that. But we knew we wanted to increase nursing staff because we have more patients. 24-hour triage, when you walk in and you have to be seen by somebody to say, like, what are you here for? What are your problems? We only had that for about 12 hours prior to the transition, we knew we wanted to do that for 24 hours. A flow nurse, that's a nurse, we did not have that pre-transition, but a flow nurse is somebody that's kind of like the air traffic controller. They're keeping up with what everything, what's going on with that patient? What are they waiting on? Are we waiting on the doctor to put orders in? Are we waiting on a lab baby to get back? Or are we waiting on a transporter? The flow nurse helps keep everybody flowing. We wanted to provide some additional treatment areas. We wanted to implement a zone process that we'll talk about in a moment. Getting out of the emergency department, we wanted to focus on early and timely discharges. If the doctor says you're gonna get out of here today, we're gonna get you out of here today. We don't want you to leave at 7 o'clock tonight, right? We wanted to prioritize our behavioral health grounds. Again, we've got a large demographic that we had to figure out how we're gonna handle them. And then we wanted to create a patient advocate and a patient experience program. All right, talking about our staff and changes. So we knew we were gonna have to add some physicians specific to this chart. If you look at our pre-transition in the first column or post-transition If you look at our pre-transition in the first column or post-transition in the second column, you'll see what our staff FTEs are. Full-time equivalents is what an FTE means, that means bodies, so that might be full-time, that might be part-time, that might not be an as many basis. But when you average out the work hours, it turns into a full-time equivalent. So prior to the transition, we have on average about seventy FTEs. Post-transition, we're averaging about ninety-nine-one FTEs. So we've added about twenty additional FTEs. Again, that's a variation of physical bodies, but actual work hours of about twenty people. Physician staff and hours, you will see the model we have on the left. We have a six A to six P, six P to six A. You always have one doctor on a schedule. Post-transition, we've added an extra doctor in the middle of the day. So the middle of the day is when we find ourselves to be the busiest. That's when everybody comes to the ER, that's when we kind of get bottlenecked sometimes. So we added an extra physician. So now you've got two physicians on the clock from eleven A to eleven P. Nurse practitioner hours, we had some, some mixed shifts here to be able to accommodate volume. A total for the day, have thirty-two hours. But if you'll see, if you look at the map there, between three A and seven A, all you had was that one physician like I was talking about previously. Post-transition, we've added some additional hours that work twelve-hour shifts. So you now have the same coverage as your physician, except they work nine A to nine P and the physician works eleven A to eleven P. So in the middle of the day, you have four providers here. That's significant because it allows our patients to have more time with their physician or their nurse practitioner, being able to get that care that they came in the emergency room for. And I'm going to let Chris talk about our zones and our treatment areas.
So looking, obviously with the increase in volume, the anticipated increase in volume, we had to find space to place patients. So that was my biggest concern. So if you look at this kind of floor plan, this is the ER entrance, like the ER parking lot or, you know, basements or parks right here, then this is the ambulance ramp. So once you walk in, of course, you have triage. What we did, the new areas or green areas, this used to be a break room. It was moved, and this used to be a vascular lab, like kind of like a cath lab. We moved the break room to the gallery of this vascular lab and we pretty much deconstructed that vascular lab and turned it into our new fast track. So those are where we're seeing the low acuity patients from. My goal is to see forty percent of our volume through these zones. They're both recliner units. This one's called vertical zone because keeping patients vertical. There's a lot of studies in emergency medicine that show that length of stay is much better when patients stay vertical rather than laying down on a bed. And not every patient needs a bed, not everybody, every patient needs a cardiac monitor. The rest of this, zone A is kind of like the main ER. This is where highest acuity patients are, resuscitation rooms. And then zone B is just another area. To kind of go with the holes, we created a bed hole zone, that's zone C, and we have six admitted patients over there. So that kind of helps us still, you know, like not clog up our main beds for high acuity patients with lower acuity things or medical holes. Fast track, we have just some pictures of that here. So this is the entrance when you first walk in. You can actually get to the fast track through the triage if you fall into that acuity. You will be sent all the way around, it's open nine A to nine P. We set up with a nurse and a nurse practitioner. But this is the entrance, this is the exam room, it has its own exam room over there. And then we have seven recliners in that area, so we can have seven patients there at a given time.
So historically, where we had in that waiting room medicine and we were taking care of those patients, those patients are now in a more isolated quiet area where they can get that care away from everybody else.
And we've heard a lot of complaints, you know, about things being done in the lobby, even though we were treating them, you know, it's not ideal patient experience. So like moving that to the back, that really has helped a lot. Benefits, additional thirteen treatment areas, like spaces. Allows for lower acuity patients to be seen and discharged faster. It's a quieter, more secluded area for these patients rather than being in the lobby and just kind of being back and forth. And it allows us to take better care of our higher acuity patients. We're not taking up our high acuity beds for what lower acuity patients don't necessarily need those beds. So after the transition, all of these metrics start, like for our fiscal year starts in October. So it compares October of twenty twenty-three until seven eighteen, which was the last day prior to the transition and the merge. So prior to that, we saw ninety-two point four patients on average a day. Post-merge, like up until December tenth, we see an average of one twenty-six a day. That's a thirty-six percent increase in volume. And so that's a pretty substantial increase in volume. And all of, like, I've taken all of these metrics, it was a complete culture change. We don't like changing what we do every day. We've done something the same way for twenty years, we don't like change. So it's taken staff, you know, partnerships, a lot of different things to make this work. Admissions have not really changed. The overall net percentage will drop, but the average admissions per day is actually going up to account for the admissions strength going in each day. Love without being seen is a big metric, so love without being seen, these are patients that come in and they may sign in, see the lobby's busy, they don't want to land and walk out. Some of these are unavoidable, we don't have the opportunity to see them, but they're patients that leave without being seen by a provider, which obviously we don't like. We've been able to decrease that by thirty-three percent. Our net length of stay, so this is the time from when you arrive until you're taken to a bed upstairs. We've had a seventeen percent decrease in that. Discharge length of stay from arrival to when you're discharged from the department has gone down as well, six percent decrease. Our overall length of stay, twenty percent decrease. Our door to provider, so door to provider is from when you check in until you're seen by a nurse practitioner or a physician. We were eighty-five minutes on average, meaning before the merge, and since we're at sixty-one minutes, and that's a twenty-eight percent decrease. Door to bed was eighty minutes and now we've got it down to forty-eight on average. So when we talk about each of our metrics, if we're like compared to such other places of what we've submitted to CMS or other regulatory agencies, we report data than medians. However, it's important to know that mean, the actual mean is probably more consistent with what each patient's going to see under bed. Like if I, look, if I think about how long patients waited yesterday, it's going to be more than the mean. So the median's not going to change as much, but pretty substantial progress with changing these means. Door to bed, eighty to forty-eight, forty percent decrease. Door to provider, eighty-five minutes was the average prior to the merge and now we're at sixty-one minutes. And so we still continue to make good headway with decreasing that. The median has gone from forty to thirty-five and then our discharge length of stay, of course, has came down as well. Patient satisfaction, so you know, like, that's a big thing for us. Before the merge, this overall likelihood to recommend is our net promoter score, right? And so all of our nurses and staff were really hard to take care of patients and it's very kind of like disheartening to have like negative responses. So prior to the merge, we always had a negative net promoter score, right? Like we were at negative forty at one point, never had a positive net promoter score. After the merge, we have been consistently positive. Currently, for December, our net promoter score is a ten, ten point nine, like right before this. But we've had a hundred and fourteen percent increase in our net promoter score. So it kind of echoes the improvement of our metrics, we're getting that great feedback from patients. These are the other four big patient satisfaction indicators for the ER that we monitor and we've seen twenty to thirty percent improvement in those. But again, right now, for that time period, it's one point nine-three currently in December, we're at a positive ten.
Okay, so talk about some of the other initiatives that we did in the hospital. We focused on early and timely discharges of inpatients. We have a meeting every afternoon in our administration area where all of my nursing leaders come and we sit around the table and we talk about every single patient in the hospital that's going to be discharged today. What is the holdup? What is, what is slowing them down from getting to their next destination? And what can we do to help that? Because I have to be able to move those patients out upstairs so that Chris can move his patients out of the ER into those beds. And so it's a constant rolling motion. That bed huddle each day has allowed us to be able to get patients out quicker and more timely. We've also implemented a behavioral, behavioral health rounds daily. Where a psych nurse practitioner, Chris, myself, some other admin team from the sixth suite, we all go to the ER on a daily basis and we round and we talk about every single behavioral health patient that is in the ED. And what are the challenges? Do they need to be admitted? Do they need to be discharged with services? Do they need to be transferred to another facility? Is it an adolescent? Is it a child that needs care? Do we need to transfer them to somewhere because we don't have an adolescent program? That has allowed us to be able to move those patients through a lot quicker through the system and to keep them from sitting in the ER for days and days on end. Because that is sometimes one of the challenges is that we don't have a lot of services to take care of these patients. We also created a patient advocate program. Her name is Ms. Jennifer Crosby, she does an amazing job. We've got signage all throughout the hospital that's got her direct phone number. They call her on the weekends, on vacation consistently, and she always picks up that phone and she answers it because it makes a difference because when you need something, you want to call somebody and you want somebody to answer. You don't want it to go to voicemail. She figures out what the problem is and she finds a solution and she either fixes it or she gets another lawyer involved to be able to figure out whatever we can do to make that patient's experience just a little bit better. We've also implemented a patient experience program with a lucrative candidate to that. She has a lot of new initiatives. We're going to launch, do a hard launch in January of two twenty-five. Really excited about that, but more to come on that. We do have several recognition that we just wanted to highlight. Two of the big ones for our ER are Get With The Guidelines, Senior Receiving and Get With The Guideline Stroke Receiving Center. These are highly sought after and very hard to get. There is a lot of collaboration between us, the providers in the community, EMS, our cardiologists, a lot of work that goes into this. But this means that we're taking really good care of these patients. And we are, we are one of the only ones in the area that have that senior receiving certification. So if you have a heart attack, you want to come to RNC because we're going to take good care of you and get you where you need to be and under the recommended guideline. We've also got our certification for resuscitation. We've got our Blue Plus Distinction from Retinitis and knee and hip replacement. Lots of good services at RNC. And then I just wanted to take a second to say thank you to the RNC ED staff. Yes, Chris and I, Dr. Valen, we have a lot of plans, we have a lot of initiatives, but we didn't make all these things come to be. The staff are the ones that did these things. The staff are the ones that put in the hard work. They put in the, the hours and the learning and the culture change to be able to take care of the patients that come to us every single day. And I don't know if you guys have been in healthcare or been in the hospital lately, but people don't come to the hospital if they're happy, unless they're coming to have a baby. So you don't typically come to the hospital on your best day, you're not in the best mood. And our staff are always treated the best way. But at the end of the day, we're here to take care of patients no matter what with a smile on our face and to give the best care that we can. It's important to note that we've been travel-free in our ED since September of two thousand twenty-three. So every one of these staff members are local people that are here and they do this because they want to take care of our community. And then lastly, I just wanted to show some of our comments. I took these from the last two weeks or so from our patient satisfaction, our patient surveys, just some comments for you guys to read. We're seeing these consistently and it's impactful to us, but it's impactful for other people to see what we're seeing. So just a couple that I wanted to take a moment to point out. In the middle, it's a regular non, it says, "I know that RNC always gets a bad rap. I have been on the end of a bad experience there myself, past visit. This time everyone was kind, compassionate and caring." The bottom one, it's a break of the ten. "I was so impressed with how quick I was taken care of and I got out within three hours. I've used RNC the last forty years and this was the first time it was organized and not stressful. I should have gone up there days earlier, but I dreaded going because the service was always fore and timely. So whatever changes y'all have made worked right. Please keep improving because we're the good care at the only hospital we have now." So we're seeing this more consistently than not, but you guys know as much as that, it's, it's going to take small incremental growth. Until somebody comes to my emergency department and experiences it, they're always going to have that old experience that's kind of in the background. So we've got to do a better job and a consistent job. And every time we come to that ER, we're going to take good care of you and we're going to build that trust back for the community.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Could y'all, could y'all share that with us via email?
I want to say something. I think that this right here is an extremely important and necessary thing to, you're right. You know, there was a negative connotation and still is in some ways about our hospital, just like there was once a negative connotation in the city of Madison. But this administration has worked really hard to change that narrative and to boost the morale around the community. And I think that the same thing can happen for RNC. RNC is one of our greatest assets in the city and we have to treat it as such. And I've had negative experiences, I've been vocal about those experiences. But this has shown me that you guys are acknowledging it, owning it and working towards something. So I want to thank you for what you're doing, thank you for your service, and I look forward to seeing where RNC is going to go.
Okay, we have one more presentation tonight. It's Ader Hacker, he's going to talk to us. He's going to talk to us about those residential developments.
Thank you, and I apologize for being so late. But I didn't know until today that I could bring PowerPoint and my staff, me couldn't get that worked into the schedule. So, and I've got plenty of information here in the handout, maybe too much. I've been accused of having too much information. So maybe rather than going through this handout, if I could just speak to you a moment, if we're almost through, about is what's called the park at the level. It's a forty-two acre parcel. If you get off the Parkway or the Eastern bypass, um, Chairman Watson could go down to somewhere, Old Gate Road. Go across somewhere, Old Gate Road, that becomes Coxville, not Ogden, it's something out in Charlotte, but that's Coxville. Going north, there've been some new homes built along Coxville on the left or the west side, which figured out doesn't hurt so. This is the property to the east of that, to the right of it. It's behind Grace Fellowship Church. And it's a triangular area, as you can see from the mound. It's forty-two acres. It was originally a barracks complex. The military had old concrete base reunit barracks, no air conditioning, probably middle east. And they were there when I was a child and that was a long time ago. So the barracks were torn down by the city back some years ago in cooperation with the MDA. And what was left were concrete slabs. In fact, there are over six acres of concrete slabs in that forty-two acre area. The, it's bordered by three public streets making a triangle. And then there are three small streets in the internal part of it that divide that rather well. It really became obvious that it was low hanging fruit for subdivision. It's zone S N two, which I think you call suburban neighborhood district, which quote from your zoning, is designed for single-family homes of varying size and then creation of new neighborhoods that are better connected to community facilities, neighborhood services and other neighborhoods. I think that's perfect for it. And if I could just say, I am very passionate about this project. And just to be transparent, I know there's controversy and like Candy addressed earlier. I'm in the, I was born here, I've lived here all my life. My father's business was started sixty-six years ago. I've been a part of it for forty-five years and I've got grandchildren here now, so I'm a lifer. I plan to, Lord willing, I plan to die here. So I'm passionate about Aniston, I'm passionate about God and County, and I'm passionate about anything that I see as an obvious win-win. And that's the way I look at this, as a win-win for God. So I petitioned the MDA to get it developed as a residential subdivision. We tried to find people who would. There were some home builders who weren't able to satisfy what was necessary to make it into a subdivision. And we didn't want to continue the practice of dairy picking lots around. As you know, if you do less than eight or eight and a half, you don't have to have subdivision. So they can pick off the lots and then leave the rest for snakes and pine trees. So we finally got a developer from Louisiana who signed a purchase agreement in twenty twenty-two, but that fell through. And so we're very, I was very disappointed about it. And after that, we tried unconsciously to get any developers to take it on because of some of the hurdles to get it done. So I pressed the MDA, let's do a public development. Like, let's take public, put on this, this development, nobody, there's no developer making profit. It's a profit-free development for the benefit of the community. Nobody benefits from the development except the constituents. There's no profit motive. So thankfully, they moved ahead, made a big investment to it. It's just been slow to get the thing going, and some of the delays of inclusion here, for y'all to look at. But, but basically, if you go to the second page on item seven on proposed features, I just want to talk about what we're looking at trying to do. Take that forty-two acres, again, the street's naturally divided into four sections or four phases. The first three are in the southern part, the phase one being southwest corner, which is seventeen lots, phase two being southeast corner, twelve lots, and then phase three being right above that, which is another twelve lots. So you're looking at forty-one lots in that area that's currently already designed, already laid out, and we already have a contractor out there who's already committed and working to clear and clean, remove the concrete slabs, which, by the way, improves the store and runoff situation, because you're taking out six acres of impervious service, and even if you built a house on every lot, you're still less than half of that. So you're, you're actually making it a better lay of the land as it relates to water contributing to the neighbors. So it's got advantages in many, many ways, and I just wanted to present this to you because we do have an app. We all know that, well, first of all, I'll just tell you about the current commitments. The MDA's already spent sixty thousand dollars on engineering and survey work. My time, by the way, is free. I'm not on MDA, but because they saw they had a fool on the hook, they hired me for nothing and asked me to continue to try to work the project, because I do want to see it happen. So I've been doing this, and again, my, my commitment is to the city, to the area, and to be transparent. My church is right in front of it, so we don't want, I, I want to say what's good. I mean, what could be better for subdivision than to be behind a church? So the MDA's putting in sixty grand engineering. We've given a contract for about two eighty-eight for the clear and clean removal of concrete pads, and then the utilities, which haven't been started yet, underground utilities, power, sewer extensions, water, those things could run as much as two hundred and eighty thousand. And then the land value is around two hundred and forty thousand, so that's a value of about eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So if you look at the last page, and that is what I'm requesting against the city, and please don't laugh, laugh at my alliteration, but it's three things. I want you to protect the development, provide for the infrastructure, and promote invasion. By protect the development, I'm asking if we can, regardless of the delays, which are probably, I'll admit, due to my ineptitude, I'm not a developer, I'm in construction, but I'm, I'm probably the reason why there were a lot of delays. The staff has been good to work with. It's just that I didn't know what I was doing. So whatever the reason for the delays, I think the staff are great. We now have final plans and final construction calls. We've got to roll off them over there, but, so they're ready for approval. But the last holdup came at the last meeting that the mayor facilitated, when we were told that then the, the development needs to pay for the streets internal to there, the researches and the storm drains upgraded or checked out as soon as possible. You can see I've got pricing from our engineering firm. Those two items would total a maximum of like two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So I'm just asking, especially in light of what the city's done for other developments, this being a nonprofit development, the benefits of all, I would just ask for the city to strongly consider providing for that infrastructure and, from last, promote invasion. It's my opinion, and so certainly I can be wrong, but this is truly the highest conditions for this piece of property. It's one of the few places on the club that water can service now residentially, because you're going to need a water tank. Most of the other residential areas need a water tank because the elevation's too high to be served. This is ready. It's ready. And again, if you go look at it, it's laid out for a subdivision, and if you go take a walk in there, you'll see there are huge, beautiful trees in there. Oaks, lobolli pines, monster trees, some of them as big as that table, that you can't see because of the shrub pines that's grown up since Fort Close in ninety-nine. It's a beautiful piece of property, can be a beautiful subdivision, and I just would really request that the city consider granting the approvals necessary to protect the property for going forward, whatever the city may do with it, that is protected, because subdivision. Or at least that hurdle's been covered where a potential developer, if the city were to get rid of it or whatever, the potential developer already has those hurdles covered. So it's easier for them to pick up and go. But I'll stop at that and ask for questions.
Any, any questions or comments at this point? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Item two, routine and housekeeping, cash conversion is only consented in the time. Any issues or comments there? Okay, the third item also appears only consented in the time. Richard, we have the Thompson here with respect to donation property to eleven sixteen more. Again, that's only consented in the time we got. Like, say word to this. And, and, and we appreciate it, again, it's, it's on the, it's on the end of the schedule.
I bought that property with the idea of a development, and the after-bought of it said B eight, and I need two Bs, so I'm glad y'all had that.
Okay, because folks, I, we provided a list of twenty twenty-four accomplishments to the council.
Yes, I did, because times, and I just want to go through this real quick, because what I want to do with PowerPoint, when we start building this together, there's so much that's been done that the PowerPoint, we don't have time to go through it. But what I want to make sure of is that we share this with council, because in, in twenty twenty-two, there wasn't been an article saying what we want to do, what you promised the citizens we were going to do. And those projects, right now, if you look at it in twenty twenty-five, all those projects are probably going to become fruition. So I want you to take a look at what has happened, what has happened in Aniston, just like it's good here, we're here tonight with what's going on at RMC, the things we, and the things that we got going on, and bigger things that's coming. And the only thing we're talking about priorities for, for FY twenty twenty-five, continue to follow and refresh our comprehensive plan, because it's working, continue to follow and update our, our doctor, CIP, our common rule of project, the plan is working, but we've got the five directors doing a great job of making sure that's continuous and it's refreshed each and every year. And the thing, transition down to, to city hall downtown, we're looking to do that February of twenty twenty-five. And place training for city, we want it, board members, I think that's key. We have board members, but aren't being trained properly. I think that's key. Talking with the county now, that maybe United May be able to help us out, where we have somewhere to help train these, these warranty, so they go into it knowing what they're expecting. The other thing, I believe, completion of Microtubewalk restroom, which is going to happen in twenty twenty-five, completion of the airport and master plan, which will happen in, in twenty twenty-five, transition plan for the clubs, the city control, we're looking to have that plan ready by April twenty twenty-five. Leadership, board transitions for healthcare for it, we're working on that, of course, and completion of the dragon trail, which we're looking at is going to happen in twenty twenty-five. So these are the things that have happened, these are the things that I thank you all in this council, the others council, and I want to thank the things that they promised. Y'all have acted, followed through on them. In twenty twenty-five, which is again, this is my last time, and I will brief the council on the, of what we're doing here, but I think, what I think that this council has done something that I have not seen in my thirty years of being here, you all have made a promise to the people, and y'all have kept that promise. But the one thing that I want to key in it is that money that we got from the Restreat Fund, I want to make sure that you understand that we got over thirteen, it's a little about thirteen million, two hundred and ninety-nine, eight hundred, eight hundred and sixty dollars. That's what we got. Our finance person has kept up with that money to the dollar. Right now, we're going to meet all criteria that is meant for that. We have to have it committed by the end of this year. We have to have a project completed by September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Those things we have already committed, those things are going to, the council, which were done with this, and I think, I just listen, I think what happened with COVID, and this is post-COVID, I think what just happened, and you think about this, it's a spiritual song that said, "All that happened in COVID, all those bad things happened," but it says, "Something good is going to come out of this." And all that, what we got from the COVID funds and that, something good is coming out of this, and I think this should be applauded, your council should be laugher for this. I think you did a great job on that, your leadership, as well as the staff, that the staff that is here, you bring out that end, and make sure this happens. We have kept a promise to the citizens, and I think that should be, that's commendable. And I thank y'all for that, for listening to this.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
No, not worrying that. But I did want to, I kind of spoke with you about it earlier. I know that we have our nine candidates, and I, and obviously the city councilor position, we kind of got to handle that, but we did receive the resumes for the nine candidates, resident manager, and I would like for us to stay on top of that and look back, possibly setting up some interviews, work on it, so we can be, beginning of the year.
Yeah, that'll work. And I think it'd be very great for us on, on our meeting on the seventh, for us to go into a panel session following that meeting, as well.
Just want to say one thing for the people that don't realize where this property is. This is the old Heenan bottle property, and it's going to be where the dragon trail comes in. I think it's going to be great for the city.
It will be, yeah. We appreciate that very much. Okay, let's stand in a German, I'm ready to be posted.